Okay, we now have the pleasure of having Mark Sanders here for the East Lake Recreation Services District. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hey, Mark.
How's everybody doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, good, thanks. Well, I can't believe it's already been four years since I've been here.
That's because you live in paradise.
I know. It is paradise. I'd like to just start out by saying it's been really another busy year at East Lake Recreation. There's a few facts I'd like to just state about our area. Population of East Lake is 32,318. That was 2016 numbers. It's increased by about 3.5% from 2010 to 2016. Our family household make up approximately 70% of the total household population. Median household income is 83,425. And the median house or condo value was $342,923. The median resident age is 51. And why I state this is that East Lake community is a growing community with many young families in need of recreational services. And I thank you for helping provide those services. This year, this past year, we continue to address the punch list of the many infrastructure issues that we have out at East Lake Recreation. Our big project this past year was putting in LED lighting for our four baseball fields. An expensive ticket item, but one that was well received. That's now a safer and more energy efficient mode of lighting for us. So we're really happy about that. Many, many projects to do out there still to come. This next big project for the coming year, we're hoping, is to address the lighting issue on soccer fields. And that is another big ticket item, about $345,000. So probably they have to do that in little chunks, or big chunks. We've had over 3,000 participants in our sports programs. That's not counting folks that come out to watch or just use our facilities. So I estimate that at between 200 and 300,000 people that visit our sports facilities and recreational facilities every year. And I think that's probably a modest number. The really kind of unique, well, not really unique in the county, but unique for us is the volunteer hours that our folks provide for our Little League Baseball, our soccer, our football cheerleading programs. And at last year, the volunteer hours that were reported to me were about 23,000. And if you take that times the hourly wage provided by AARP, it's over $540,000. So we're really happy with the volunteers that we have, and it gives us a real sense of community out there. So I think we're serving the community well. And I ask that you consider approving the budget for the 2010 fiscal year. If there's any questions, I'd love to take them.
Question?
Yes.
I don't know if it's Mark from you or maybe from staff, but could we get an update, if not today, as soon as possible, kind of where we are in getting the additional parking that you desperately need out there? I know there's a project ongoing. I know there's a lot of issues related to that. How, and I just need to know that it's front burner for the county staff looking into this and affecting the change? Because we've been talking about it since I've been there. I've been there four years, and we have, you know, made no progress in terms of getting you more parking. I know we're looking at it.
Right, we desperately need more parking out there. And we have exhausted several different areas that have been eliminated from the parking. We have one now that's east of the facilities and next to the utilities, water utilities plant there. And I think right now we're at the stage where I think we just got the boundary surveys. And I have just emailed my, the guy who would be providing the plans for us, for the parking lot. And so we're trying to do the, schedule a pre-application meeting right now. So I'm thinking, I'm hoping we have that, and then we'll come to the county in the pre-application meeting and find out, kind of get the numbers and what we need to do.
But the boundary survey indicates that we're going to be able to provide that parking?
We needed the boundary surveys just in order to present for the pre-application meeting. So I don't know if we, you know, we're very early in that process, even though it's been years.
And this parking is accessed from old East Lake Road?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be just to the east side of the driveway that turns into the utilities plant there.
And has there been any further discussion about how you get from there to the field? Is it going to be on the street? Is it going to be bridged over?
Well, that too, we have two ideas in mind. One would be providing a walkway across a marshy area, very much similar to what we have in our parks, the boardwalk type thing. And the other is providing sidewalks along Old Keystone to the fields. And I talked to Paul Cozy about that, and he thought there might be some sidewalk money available for that project. I don't know if that is the safest route to go because we're along a road that's not well lit. And a lot of that would be during the evening.
Yeah, provided that get by the environmental stuff. I mean, I think people usually go from point A to point B as straight as possible. So even if the sidewalk's built, I'm afraid we're going to have people kind of figuring out other ways. So it'd be nice. Okay, well, thank you for that update. Appreciate it.
I have a question. So I'm new, so forgive me, I don't understand how it all works. So you have this special ad valorem text. Now, but I'm seeing the budget, and the only thing it says in the budget is that your revenue. Are you not doing sponsorships for Little League and football and soccer? Are you generating revenue with fees or anything like that? Or are you strictly operating this strictly on ad valorem?
Pretty much strictly on ad valorem. We have a unique situation where each individual, our user groups, we do not charge a fee to. But they provide all of the expenses for their utilities and manage their buildings.
So your user groups are Little League and soccer and football?
Correct.
Okay, so they do sponsorships and they charge fees, right?
They charge fees, correct.
And, I'm sorry, so say that again, and so they pay you something to use those facilities or buildings or?
No, we have a signed contract with them, and they have to meet certain requirements. But they take care of all the utilities and the upkeep of their concession stands and everything around those. All the utility costs, the electrical, water, et cetera.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Next is Lois Anil, East Lake Library Services District.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
First of all, I want to thank you all for what you do and for giving the Fixa Directors the opportunity and the funding to serve the residents of North County. Of course, our biggest accomplishment this past year was the completion of the construction project in December of 2018. Some of the highlights were that it added 2,500 square feet, which included a new community room with a galley kitchen, an automatic folding wall to divide the room for smaller groups, a new children's room with an early childhood corner, and a self-checkout kiosk, both which were paid for with MSTU funds. So thank you very much. Those were two enhancements that were very special for our youth services. A beautiful enclosed teen room designed and furnished by our teen advisory board. So they took ownership of it. I was very proud of them. Book drops that come directly into the building and additional workspaces and offices for staff and volunteers. The total project cost was approximately $1.4 million, with $1 million from the state budget appropriation, $200,000 from BP funds, again, thank you. And the balance for furniture, equipment, and enhancements came from the library's capital reserves. Although the project did have some delays and setbacks, I want to commend the Department of Real Estate Management, particularly my project manager, John Smith, who had to put up with my whining, complaining, questions, and nagging for more than a year. Also, the OMB, which handles all of the financial transactions between the state, the county, and the library seamlessly. Emily Maguire did a wonderful job paying all the bills. Okay, we had no complaints. Before I talk about our plans for fiscal year 2020, I want to thank you for the funding this past year, which did require creative ways to keep programs and services alive and well. The construction project inspired us to seek better relationships with our community partners. Brooker Creek Preserve, East Lake Fire Rescue, the YMCA, and others worked with us to create an array of collaborative programming. We invested in new databases that allowed patrons to access information from home, and we were one of the first libraries in the county to offer mobile hotspots to library members. These devices allowed individuals to access the internet almost anywhere and included an unlimited data plan. It was paid for by the Friends of the Library, so we have been very popular in North County with these devices. We also fed our patrons through the year by celebrating various food holidays such as National Pie Day, National Watermelon Day, volunteer appreciation dinners, and we know if you feed them, they will come. Despite the lack of onsite programs, I can proudly point out that our circulation statistics for all materials did not change dramatically, and our traffic count remained close to 100,000 people coming into our little library. We have added new print collections such as parenting and genealogy, as well as added to several popular collections such as our Read Box, which offers bestselling books and DVDs with no wait. We are also bucking national trends that indicate a decrease in books and other printed materials being checked out. All of our print collections show an increase from the previous year. I commend my staff for maintaining a quality collection, which is only hampered by limited space. Another interesting note, although we are the smallest library in Pinellas County, we have reversed one statistic over the past five years. We now lend more of our titles to other county libraries than what is requested from other libraries by our patrons. So I guess people like what we have. It's a good thing. Now that the construction is over, you can see from the summer program guide that was just passed out, that was created by our youth services and teen coordinators at East Lake Library, is definitely going to be sizzling this summer with programs for all ages. The staff has been chomping at the bit for a whole year without a community role to be able to offer the types of programs that we would like. We are now in the process of completing the parking lot at the front of the library using the $150,000 in BP funds allocated for this purpose. This lot will provide much-needed parking for 15 cars along with four additional spots in the southeast corner. I am planning to revive my conversations with the school board this year for a joint-use agreement with Cypress Woods Elementary School, should we be fortunate enough to receive Penny for Pinellas money for our Phase II building expansion. What are we hoping to accomplish in the next fiscal year with your help and support? We recently tried Sunday hours for three months with an overwhelming positive response from the public. As a result, we will be open on Sundays beginning of September through most of the school year. We are also investigating other options to increase patron access to library materials outside of normal operating hours without any increase to staff. Some of these are an outdoor locker system similar to Amazon lockers, which we can provide right outside our building, as well as a very unique system, a bit radical, called Open Access, which is presently being used in Gwinnett County, Georgia. Much of what we are doing in the upcoming year is an implementation of some of the suggestions that came out of the strategic planning discussions. For example, more community partnerships. We recently reached out to Junior Achievement, and they will be facilitating several teen workshops on financial literacy and life skills this summer. We're also updating our website to be sure that it is ADA compliant using an outside specialist. We're putting more money into in-house and outreach programs and services due to the changes in the lease agreements with the county. And as a cultural center for East Lake, we will be bringing back the Sunday Concert Series, investigating and creating a new public art area, and reaching out to local cultural groups to bring more diversity to our programs and services. We're expanding free tech assistance and classes for patrons and staff training for such things as first aid and CPR. To better assist with the 2020 census, I will be working with the county to facilitate this process at our library, since it's going digital, as well as attend workshops at the ALA Conference next month. In November, we will be celebrating the library's 20th anniversary, and I invite you all to attend the festivities. This is including a roaring 20s theme murder mystery night where I will be the host, Lada Librarian. What are our long-range plans? I've just distributed our new strategic plan for 2019, 2022. This came out of several meetings, discussion groups, and surveys, and most importantly, our planning breakfast on March 30th with many stakeholders from the community, as well as county representation. I do want to say I hope this is a lot more interesting than a 23-page document that was the last strategic plan. I really feel that this is the way to go in terms of visual strategic plans where it gives the broad strokes, and then from there, we create the action plans that looks to what the input has been and how we can take these goals and objectives and apply them to specific staff, to specific volunteers, and to be able to move forward. It's a wonderful roadmap because it points us in the right direction and keeps us relevant in today's world. Anyone who has asked what East Lake needs responded overwhelmingly in terms of more space and more parking. However, more importantly is what we do with that space, if we're fortunate enough to get it. We already have county departments, as well as local businesses, associations, and organizations booking our one new community room. However, we'd like to provide smaller meeting rooms and workspaces fully equipped for productivity with flexible floor plans. Also, more quiet study rooms, learning commons, and adequate seating areas for simply reading or working independently are sorely needed. As previously mentioned, our print collections in all parts of the building cannot adequately expand to meet the demands of our members. Without a state library construction grant again this year to renovate the main public area, and I want to commend several people from the county who worked towards getting that done. Brian Lowack in particular, I really appreciate all of his help. We will still continue to find ways to best utilize the space we have, including updating our public computer area. East Lake Community Library has become the hub of our community, and we strive to provide the best customer service possible. I want to thank you for your continued support and hope that you will also consider our critical need for more space to meet the needs of our residents when you look at the Penny for Pinellas allocations. And visit us anytime. I love to do tours. So, do you have any questions?
Great job, Lois.
I really like your strategic plan. That is very visual and...
Okay, there's a couple people there on the front cover, and I didn't choose those pictures. Thank you. Yes, I have to say, I went to a, there was a speaker at a library director's conference a few years ago up in Tallahassee, and she was the one that really talked about changing the format of strategic plans. And I was so glad I attended because this is what came out of it, and I think it's a lot better than what we had before.
Wow, we're proud of all that you've accomplished and your staff as well.
And I appreciate all your help and support.
And your volunteer board, for that matter. Okay, thank you. Next, we have Jean Coppola and Erica Linford with the Palm Harbor Community Services District.
It's really odd, Jean offers his apologies. He is sick. So I've never stood here by myself.
He's letting you get away with it.
Somebody needs to stand with me. First and foremost, I can't say enough how blessed I am. This is my 16th year with Palm Harbor Community Services Agency. And a couple of you have been here through that and have watched me evolve into the director. And I couldn't be more proud of the efforts that we are doing in North County. We have strived over the last, well, 12 years to learn from our mistakes, as Pinellas County as a leader has taught us. And we have changed the way we do business. We have, I think, 11 full-time people and myself on staff that run everything and all of our things that I'm going to cover with you today. And I tell you that to say, without volunteers and part-time staff, we couldn't afford to do the businesses that we're doing up there. When you think of part-time staff, you might think of the high school or college-age child. But believe it or not, to your point earlier in the day, we have several retirees that have come in. One is a reception person, one is an event person, one is a program person, who have retired from their day jobs and wanted something fun to do in recreation. They chose us, so we couldn't be more proud to have the 16-year-old on the job with the 78-year-old on the job. So it's quite a diverse atmosphere that keeps me keeping on. I do want to thank each and every one of you on behalf of the residents in North County, the relationships that we have built. Mr. Burton, your staff is phenomenal. I know I sent you a couple of emails, but from the tree trimmer up to department heads, they've been phenomenal to work with our agency, and it has only gotten better in my tenure here. And I can't be more proud to say that I'm a partner with Pinellas County. So it comes from this leadership of the board, as well as your future leadership for a long time to come, at least until I retire. We continue to capture the support of our constituents. We added a special event last year. And I believe Commissioner Eggers can attest to the outpouring of support of our first annual Christmas tree lighting in Palm Harbor. Palm Harbor's never had a holiday tree lighting event. There was thousands and thousands of people, to the point where the sheriff and I have discussed closing some streets next year because it was phenomenal. It overflowed the parking lot. We had real snow. We had, it was a great, and it was great for our economic impact in Palm Harbor because the businesses loved having packed restaurants all night long. So we fortunately, or unfortunately, will continue that event as long as we can fund that, and we are growing that tree. It's an artificial tree that can be grown every year, so the initial investment is going up two more feet this year. So it'll be seen a little further. We're hoping to get to 20 feet before I retire. But it's not cheap, but we're continuing that. Just for the education of some board members that weren't here back in 2012, when Harbor Hall and White Chapel were struggling under someone else's management, the county commission at that time came to my boss and asked the Fixa Board to take over operations of that. And I say that to say this, for an educational purpose, we received zero more ad valorem. We were just recovering from the 20, you know, 2007 crash of our economics. And just as said earlier by the property appraiser, we're just now recovering to that point. We took on operations of those two buildings, and I'm so proud of our staff that we've maintained the level of service there, increased services at those two buildings. And I believe staff will attest, as well as the commission, it's been a fantastic partnership and helped us grow our businesses. We've run some summer camps out of there. We have quilters' clubs that meet there now, as well as the weddings, receptions, baptisms, sweet 16s. But that's just an attest, not to me, but to the staff that stands with me on everything that we do, and they do more with less. And that's been our motto since 2007. Just some numbers that I don't normally bore you with, but I thought they were really interesting when I started to research them. Some of you have individually heard about my love of cardio drumming, which is my new fad of the last 18 months to two years. We know over in six months, over 2,000 people participate at the center in cardio drumming. So that was phenomenal when I looked that number up. Right behind that, kind of opposite, is duplicate bridge. So go figure out that dichotomy. But we have a large following in the bridge group, and there were over 1,400 bridge players in the first six months. I had that same face when I looked that up. But then we go down to the toddlers. We have Zumbini and Music with Mayor, which are two great preschool programs that operate again out of what was used to be called the senior center back before my tenure. So we've done everything from three to we had a 90-year-old celebrate her birthday in the Pinochle Club. So Bingo had over 1,200 participants, Pickleball had over 1,100, and other games in, Mahjong is a Tao game, had over 1,200 participants. And all the other missингus programs, about 2,000. And that's just what we're doing inside the center's facility. That's not including soccer, baseball, and football groups that you talk about, or we have a lot of AAU teams that use our fields. We have currently a brand-new program. It's high school-age volleyball. People using our sand volleyball courts, which is brand-new, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, when adults don't want to go out there and play sand volleyball. We've got the kids out there during the day, and Tuesday, Thursday evening, we have the adults out there. Some of the things we do because of your support that we offer free to the community, we've had over 1,000 tax returns prepared with AARP free to the community. We had, we have an AARP driving safe, which I'm eligible for now, fantastic. Driving class that occurs at the center, we have, they're full every month, even in the summer. Years ago, it used to be May, June, July, only had a few participants, but it's full. Free blood pressure checks every month, free hearing checks every month, phones for the hearing impaired. Meet there twice a month. A dementia and Alzheimer's support group had over 600 people meet at the center in the first six months of the year. We're serving about 80 households with RCS foods that are dropped off at the center, and then our volunteers bag them, and then we drive them, most of them, over to an assisted living facility by the Walmart on Alderman. We have scholarshiped over $9,000 this summer so far in camp registrations for families that otherwise would have to leave their kids home alone or find other, maybe less safe and fun activities for their children to be doing. And we have over 150 Girl Scouts that utilize the center for their meeting place monthly. So now you understand why I'm slightly crazy. We have continued to grow with less employees than we had when I started 16 years ago. We, like I said, have only 11 full-time employees working under my direction, and we staff our program seven days a week. And I say that because even under my predecessors, we never cut one program during the recession. We may have cut some hours. We may have cut some employees' hours. But we're very happy and proud to say that we continue to try and meet the needs, obviously, we'll hopefully never get to 100%, then you wouldn't need me anymore, of the community that comes to the table and says, "We need this. We need that." The summer camp program that I have spoken individually to most of you about has boomed through the roof. We have only seven spots left for eight and unders for the entire summer. The older kids are almost full. That has not happened in our, this is our sixth summer, I believe, of running the all-day camp, which is very competitively priced in the community and is providing a huge service that was missing in North County. We had, we're up over, I think it's 55% in the in-house camp again. And some of you remember the numbers from last year were up 40%, 30%. Those camps, which are 10 weeks, are about 30% of what we fund individually outside of ad valorem. To Commissioner Peters' question earlier, we probably self-fund about $600,000 or $700,000 in addition to the ad valorem through user fees and program registration fees. And so that camp is going to be almost $300,000 this summer. It's crazy. It's phenomenal.
How many kids?
It'll be about approximately 200 to 300 kids a week, so times 10 weeks, 2,000 to 3,000 kids. All over our campuses, because that's indoor and outdoor camps. The in-house camp's 80 kids a week, and then we also have junior camp counselors through volunteerism. They get their Bright Futures hours, probably have about 15 of those a week as well. I can't thank you guys enough for supporting Fixa and what we've asked for with the MSTU funding, albeit it may seem like a minor amount of financial support. But through that, we've been able to capitalize some money to do things like buy an ABI machine. You say, Erica, what's an ABI machine? It's a machine that actually utilizes laser planing and things for the fields. So before this machine was purchased this year, the guys would be doing baseball fields and have to turn behind them as they're driving. And this machine now, it does the planing by laser, and they can actually look where they're going, not where they've been. So the field will be safer because all the pitches, and I don't understand all of that engineering of a baseball or softball field, but there are certain degrees of levelness that's needed for the mound and the home plate and the baseline. So they're very thrilled, and it helps, enhances their job, and it's safer. So again, that happened because we didn't have to repair a floor out of our operating money. We were able to do that out of MSTU funding, as well as the sign out front. I can only believe that the digital sign that we finally got a couple of years ago, through hard efforts of staff and real estate management, again, I can't applaud them enough, it advertises our program to the hundreds of crazy kids and parents that go down that street for the school, the YMCA. We had a shred event, Free to the Community, last month, and several people saw the sign. So, again, can't thank you all enough. And I won't bore you with any more details. I just can't thank you enough. Any questions? Come on. Don't let me down, South County.
You just gave me two slow-hanging curves. I'm not going to swing at them.
Come on. Don't disappoint me once a year.
Madam Chair, just thanks for what you're doing. Thanks for verifying that I have crossed Olmerton Road to North County.
As I have crossed Olmerton to South County.
But so, y'all have come so far. And I do have a question for Lois. I want to know what your hours are on Sunday. You mentioned that. But what's your biggest, you know, what's the biggest thing on your radar these days?
Wow, let me get my badge.
He put it on the tee for you.
You did. And I appreciate that question. And individually, I've said it, and I'll say it, and say it, and say it, and say it. We're out of space. We're out of room. We have needs that we are no longer going to be able to meet if we don't get some help with the penny money. And it's not a secret. I don't think anybody here hasn't heard me say that. The numbers speak for themselves. The community needs it. The community wants it. And above all, talking about combining it with a safe harbor during a storm, I think just serves that public safety need as well as a want for leisure and quality-of-life need.
Hold on. So, do you have a plan? Available space? Where?
Do I have a plan? Well, thanks for that second curve ball, sir.
This is what we do in South County. We're helpful.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Eggers, do I have a plan?
Yes, you do.
We do have an architect, a local architect, that's helped me come up with a conceptual drawing based on funding that we've requested and based on the space we have at the current center's facility, that secondary building. And I know it's been a while since you've been this side of Olmerton.
I'll come back up.
Okay. It's from the '70s. And we've patched, patched, patched. And it's getting to the point of, is it obsolescent? Do we need to decide? And that would be where, if we were blessed with the penny project, that's... We would demolish that building and put the new building there.
Well, I know we've got upcoming penny discussions. I'm assuming this will be part of that discussion. Good to see you again.
Always great to see you. All kidding aside.
Commissioner of Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Wells kind of hit on what I was going to ask. So, let me just take the opportunity to thank you for everything you do beyond Palm Harbor. Erica, it comes to every farm share event that we... The county commission holds regardless of where it is in the county. So, we appreciate your commitment.
I appreciate being invited still after the first three. I thought for sure you'd drop my name off the list, but I thought... Thank you.
So, I'm just curious because I'm looking at your other funds for recreation. Do you know about how much you're making off of the Harbor Hall and the church?
It's close to about $100,000. When you say making, that's revenue. That's not minus expenses. But what it does is it's paying for itself. So, I've not... Like I said, we didn't get any increase in Valorem.
Right.
But I say that because prior to the administration that's there now, the other agency that was managing it would never cross over and call and say, "Hey, we're booked. Can you..." So, now we can book things at the center when Harbor Hall's booked and vice versa. So, it has increased our rentals at the center, which is a larger return on investment than any other thing we do. Because it's a straight hourly rate, and it's two staff people at X amount of dollars an hour, electric, water, and you're done. So, it does pay for itself with maybe a little bit to capitalize for those improvements that, you know, paint and things like that.
Good job.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, you're always so enthusiastic, and you cover everything that we need to know.
Well, I do appreciate it.
We really appreciate you and your staff.
And Jean again is really sorry he couldn't be here. You know he would be. I don't think he's ever missed, ever. So, we'll have to come to St. Pete to see you.
Why are you sighing?
It's 1:15, and I had a bag of popcorn. I'm hungry. That's the reality of it. You guys have a good day. Thank you so much. And Mr. Burton, we'll see you next week. All righty. Take care.
Bye.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Pinellas Public Library Cooperative. Welcome Cheryl Morales.
He has another...
I'm sorry.
I should answer just on the library.
Yes. Lois, do you want to... Lois, please come up. Thank you.
What we had done based upon patron input and several board members who had requested Sunday hours, starting in February, what we did was to offset, so that it wouldn't affect our budget, to offset the Sunday hours that we opened from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Sundays. So, we did it for three months. We now took a look at our traffic count, our hourly traffic count, and decided the best way to offset that was to, instead of opening at 9:00 a.m., during the week, we opened at 10:00 a.m. Okay? There has been no negative impact. And I think we have a unique customer service approach, too, is that, you know, if there are staff members near the front door and somebody shows up at 9:30 thinking we opened at 9:00, we'd open the door for them and tell them, "Come on in. You want to pick up your holds," or whatever. So, for the last... For the month of April, we ran a survey, in-house only, for people to... Just four simple questions about the Sunday hours. If they liked them, if they wanted them to continue, if they would be willing to compensate for Sunday hours by reducing hours during the week and so on. And it was overwhelmingly in favor of keeping Sunday hours. They liked the 1:00 to 5:00. They figured that's sufficient. Many people go to church on Sunday mornings. I have compensated my staff in several ways for having to give up an occasional Sunday because, you know, it's one of those things where it's not like, you know, where you can pay them double on a Sunday or something like that. So, we've worked it out. And the hardest sell was to the staff because, you know, you're asking them to come in on a Sunday afternoon. But it has worked out well and overwhelmingly positive response. So, now, the Sunday after Labor Day, we will reopen on Sundays for the same hours and go through the school year with several Sundays during school holidays and so on being closed.
Great. Thanks for the info.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Cheryl. Last but not least.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. I have to say that as 11:30 and 12 o'clock started approaching, I was really glad that you decided to break for lunch because I didn't want to be the one getting in between you and your lunch.
I know. No, you didn't. That's what I kind of figured. I thought people would start to get all...
Hungry or hangry. This year, PPLC celebrates its 30 years of service to the community. Started 1988 with the negotiation for the interlocal agreement, which was signed in 1989. So, we're having a quiet celebration. And at our annual meeting, we'll probably cut a cake or something like that. But not to call attention to ourselves, but really just to focus on the services for the community. The board has been working really hard over the past couple of years with reviewing and changing, updating the interlocal agreement, which you all just signed in October or September of 2018. And so, even though it took a few years to get it done, we're already looking at, well, the next one, we have to do this. And the next one, we have to do this. So, it's kind of a living document that will happen every five years. In addition to that, policy revisions have been really high on the list of accomplishments for the board and I. The policies, PPLC policies, most of them hadn't been updated since 2002-ish to 2010. So, it's a really big adjustment to do all these policies. Big one is internal controls policy. So, we want to make sure that we are in compliance fully with all the national auditing standards and accounting standards and that we're doing everything, checks and balances everywhere you look. We have a great board. One of our board members is here, Bill Berger, which some people... Somebody said that you should buy everybody lunch today. So, I hope that happened. It was Mr. Burton, I think. And we have, you know, county officials, city management, and two community members that make up our board. And we're very happy with that composition. So, no changes were made to the interlocal agreement regarding board composition, which is great. Board, and then member library activity. I have to say that... Oops. Okay. The 14-member libraries that make up PPLC are award-winning libraries. This year alone, the Largo Public Library was recognized as the Florida Library of the Year by the Florida Library Association. And just this week, the Gulfport Public Library won the National Medal for Library Service from the Institute of...
National Medal for what?
Library Service. From Gulfport, from the Institute of Museum and Library Services in Washington, D.C. The official presentation is scheduled for June at the White House. But Congressman Crist was here on Tuesday at the Gulfport Library to present the letter of the award to the Gulfport Library. I'll tell you why. They serve a very large LGBTQ community. And they have a very robust collection and service model for that specific community. And it is national... I think that probably, you know, they... Well, they just got the national recognition for that. So, it's a pretty big deal. So, we have a living amongst us, you know, these big, award-winning libraries in Pinellas County. As Lois mentioned about circulation trends nationally, circulation trends are a little bit going down. But our door counts, you know, the number of people that are coming in, that's not going down. And the number of people that are participating in classes and events, that's not going down either. And if you were to ask me, why did I think we're loaning less materials? I would say that a lot of it has to do with electronic resources that are available to people at home. You know, the schools, for instance, Pinellas County Schools, offers a full array of eBooks to all of their students through their portal accounts. So, they're not, you know, depending on public libraries as much, per se, as they used to, things like that. And then things that people can get at home that they're not, you know, relying on the library as much. But they are relying on libraries for so many other things. And libraries work so hard to stay relevant to the community. So, I don't think we need to worry about the circulation trends. And we're all keeping our eyes on those numbers and making sure we keep that up. The population ratios are in line with the circulation trends in the county. If you look at the big purple square triangle, that's St. Petersburg. And, you know, they're about a third of the population in the county. So, they do about a third of the circulation and all. On this slide, I want to call your attention to... Actually, this is not. I'm sorry.
Trump of Largo.
Programs... Yes, I know. We didn't have room to fit. So, you can see that, yes, we did Trump of Largo by mistake. But their number would go above that 45,000. They would be first in that bar graph. So, you can see the numbers are very high for program attendance in the libraries. And then, summer reading program is such an important function of the public libraries because most of the schools are closed. There are satellite summer bridge programs throughout the county, of course, to keep students engaged. But there has been so many studies over the past years that show that there's a real big learning slide in the summer where they just lose what they learned through the school year. So, the public libraries across the country are working really hard to prevent the learning slide. In Pinellas County, the other function of the summer reading program is that we're partnering with wonderful agencies like Juvenile Welfare Board and Pinellas County Schools to provide lunches for the kids that are coming to the libraries because the food-dependent... Or the food insecure is the term. Children in the county don't have anywhere to go for lunch during the school year. So, it's been a really wonderful partnership that the kids can come to the libraries and have their lunches there, too, as well as learn. And so, with that, I have to talk about our partnerships because that wonderful program is the result of a wonderful partnership with JWV and Pinellas County Schools. The other partnerships that we are fostering in the county do other fabulous things, like allow people to go to museums for free, where thousands and thousands of families over this past year alone have gone to our county's museums for free, and a lot of them for the first time. So, it's a win-win situation for the museums and for the library patrons because the museums are getting their door counts up and reporting that their gift shop sales are up as well. So, they're really happy for the partnership. And we're just going into a partnership with the Florida Orchestra, where there will be passes to go to concerts as well. And then orchestra groups coming into libraries and doing music programs for free. So, in addition to serving the member libraries in the county and serving the community, two other ways that PPLC serves Pinellas County residents is through our deaf literacy center and our Talking Book Library. Those are PPLC-administered services. The deaf literacy center, on this side, you can see all the variety of services that are provided. The center is housed out of the Safety Harbor Public Library because of an influx in deinstitutionalized deaf people about 20 years ago to the Safety Harbor area and the Tampa Bay area has a very large concentration of deaf individuals and families. On the... In the program statistics, if you look at the statistics, 22,000 in attendance for the programs. That puts the deaf literacy number six in all of the 14-member libraries. It kind of inserts itself in, in the number-six slot. So, being that we're not in actual library, we're providing a huge number of services to the community through that. And then the Talking Book Library for the blind and physically handicapped. With the circulation, we have about 100,000 digital books in the collection, which is housed in the PPLC building on Cleveland Street. Those are loaned through the U.S. Mail, in and out every day at a rate of 600 to 700 items a day, which puts us in line, or puts the Talking Book Library in line with... At number 10 in the 14 libraries. So, if we insert our circulation counts, there are four libraries that are smaller than what we're doing. The numbers are smaller. So, these... Oh, yes.
Question real quick. Back to that previous level, on the sign language class. Do you find... I mean, I've got an 18-month-old nephew that's going to this class. He started when he was like a year.
Right.
And learning all kinds of sign language is just amazing. Is that a group that's really growing in attendance?
It is. It's amazing. That he's hearing, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
He's hearing, and his parents are hearing.
Yes.
So, that's another component of serving the community, is helping parents and babies communicate with each other before the babies are old enough to talk.
I sometimes wonder if it's slowing that, you know, the talking part down. But he's just... I mean, he does. He communicates when he still hasn't been able to articulate sentences. So, it's just...
Oh, interesting. But 18-month sentences. Hmm.
Yeah. Anyway.
Yeah, I'm not sure where he would be in sentences. But is he talking and signing at the same time?
A little, but still signing more than...
That's great.
Yeah. So, it's just an amazing program.
It is. And this kind of a side effect to that is that we are increasing the number of people in the community who can communicate via sign language. And that's so important because when you're working at McDonald's and a deaf person comes in to order something, you know, maybe you remember a little sign language. And you can communicate with that person in their language, which is really important. It is a very different language.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for the question. And thank you for that information, too. It's fabulous. Fabulous. So in moving into the future, we are working on evaluating our strategic plan while building a new one for 2021, so we'll be working on that soon. We just launched this week a new mobile app. So we've got your app in the Apple App Store and the Google App Store, Pinellas County, Pinellas Library Cooperative is the app. And it increases the interaction between the community and the libraries because there are all the, all the libraries, Facebook pages are there, so there's that social media presence. And it's a much smoother, more up-to-date app than the one that we just decommissioned this week as well. So it's a more seamless way to communicate with your library. You can renew your own books. You can place holds on your items yourself, so everything like that. And our, the biggest thing on our radar, Commissioner Welch, is the first-ever countywide library staff development day. It was something that the libraries wanted, so we wrote it into the new inter-local agreement so that the cities would see that they sign this agreement to allow their staff, their libraries, to close one day a year and allow all their staff to attend this event. There are 450 library staff across the county. We have about 350 with a pre-registration count because some libraries do have to stay open. It'll be on Columbus Day, 2019, and we're very much looking forward to it.
It's exciting.
Yes, it is. It's very exciting. Thank you.
Any questions? Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Commissioner of Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking back at your chart with all the cities and everything, it just, it brought up the question that, I don't know when the last time the commission talked about it or what kind of feedback you're getting is. Physical presence of actual physical libraries, do we have gaps in the county where you see a need that we should be looking at a physical presence?
That's a great question. We, you know, the new Lielman Center that was the old charter school?
I'm vaguely familiar with it.
I think you all are. I think somebody's not telling me the truth, but, you know, in the early stages, they were planning for a library to be a component of that center and I think that hasn't happened. And I think that the reason is the people in Lielman and other pockets of Pinellas, unincorporated Pinellas, haven't been made aware that they are eligible for a free library card and they can go to any library that they want. So there are pockets, I mean, if you look at the map of the county and you pinpoint all the libraries, there certainly is a big pocket in that area, Lielman, up to Feather Sound, where there, there isn't one. One way to address the pocket, the city of Largo just launched a new bookmobile and they're taking that out to their far-reaching corners of incorporated Largo. So that'll hit the High Point area, which is so in need of services. And so we're looking at that. At the same time, you know, there are people across the country who think that we should be closing libraries, but, but no, we're just, you know, renovating, expanding and especially in Pasco County, they're building new libraries at an enormous speed because I'm sure you can see that their population is growing really fast, too.
It's a continual question of, do we have access? How do we create the access, whether it's physical presence in a community or whether it's better transportation or the bookmobile type thing? But it's just a continual question I'm hearing more and more in some of our communities.
I mean, I know in conjunction with the school, JWB helps to do a bookmobile.
That's been great.
And for children out in a lot of unincorporated areas.
Sure. And that, I know that that particular goes to the family center in Lielman, but as we heard from the other presentations and we're hearing is that it's not always just a book or the access to book, it's all the other things that we hear that libraries are doing. So just continual conversation point.
We can talk about building more libraries in the county. I think people would really love that. It would be very well-received.
Thank you.
So kind of following up on that theme, maybe if you have time this next year, maybe you could look and see where you think there might be gaps. And maybe it's something that we could then have a discussion about. Because I mean, Bridgecrest would be another area that's unincorporated that comes to mind and even possibly High Point.
Right.
Just off the top of my head.
We will look at that.
But almost like map out where all the libraries are and, you know, draw a circle to see how easy it is to get to for our citizens, you know, is it five miles, is it, you know?
I mean, I'm looking at a Google map right now of all the libraries in Pinellas County and.
Of course you are.
And the exact areas that you all just mentioned are the areas that are clear as day.
Right. So would you say the county commission is interested in building a library in an unincorporated section of the county?
I don't know that I have an answer for you, Justice.
Okay. But we'll look at it.
But, you know, maybe, I just think it's worth knowing and maybe having a discussion about it.
Absolutely.
You agree?
Absolutely.
Excellent. That's excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would just say from a service delivery aspect, you know, I think we should look at it. How we deliver that, we have to work through all the possibilities. But I definitely think we need to look at it from a service delivery standpoint. We've talked about that for a while. So was that a slow-hanging curve about Lielman?
No, it's kind of like, my involvement dropped off, so I'm not really sure how it ended and what it's like.
But you had brought that to the county at some point?
County brought it to me.
Really?
Yeah. In the early stages of planning.
This was a while ago.
Before they bought the site.
Okay.
So it was a long time ago. And, but I'll be there, I think, next week because there's a flood group meeting presenting the new map, kind of connecting with the earlier conversation about the new flood maps. Lisa Foster, her department, they're releasing the new flood maps for the county and they're holding an all-day event there so people can learn more about it. Tell me what you're thinking. Okay, okay, okay. So I'll have firsthand knowledge of how they landed with that community center when I'm there for that program.
Okay.
But that would be a great place. I still feel that. But they must have felt a need to repurpose the library space for something else.
Okay. Any other further questions? Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you very much. It's so good to see all of you.
We really appreciate you being here. Please say thank you to all of the folks who serve on the board, on your board, as well as your staff.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Anything else?
Just real quick, just Barry, you know, not today, but maybe you could give us an update either individually or note from your office about the new community, the status of the new, I'm the new community manager for North County. And also the status of the leases, the development of those leases for the facilities up there and then the status of that Palm Harbor master plan. Just, again, not today, but.
First one is, the position closes tomorrow, so we're accepting applications until tomorrow. This is an internal post only. And so then I'll be conducting interviews and making a selection. The others, I'll get you an update to.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. We are adjourned.